So the riding ceremonies tonight, right?
Yeah.
Hopefully it doesn't jump on us.
Scott's not going to happen, are you?
No, I'll be at the shared legislative agenda, so I will be indoors. I I feel guilty, actually. But hopefully, hopefully no rain.
Yeah. Uh, it's gonna sprinkle at least a little bit.
It seemed like the forecast was looking more encouraging than it it looked like yesterday, so.
Yeah, uh, the yesterday was the bike run. Where's the day before? Can't remember. Anyway, the toy run. I did that and, uh, well, I tell you, I got drenched. It was a mess. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, what Saturday?
Shannon, just a procedural issue. Are you gonna show the legislative agenda priorities or do you want the mayor to do that? Or are you gonna handle that?
So as far as a visual, I have a visual prepared, um, you know, should the mayor want.
You can handle that.
All right, then I'll put that up there.
So have we started?
No, we're using this interim time to kind of go through the, you should have received the the talking points.
I did. And and that's what I said, we're, we haven't started that yet.
No, I think we're waiting for Councilmember Stedman.
Okay. And are are we going to stay on the same Zoom thing for the meeting?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So question is, who is reading what?
Yeah, when, uh, Shannon and Brian, uh, become, when their videos turn on, we'll walk through that.
Okay.
Do we know for sure who all is gonna be able to make the meeting?
You know.
From the council?
Yes, I believe Councilwoman Stedman's the only person we're waiting for. Is that right, Shannon? Shannon, I guess for sake of time, do you wanna maybe kind of walk through and if Councilwoman Stedman shows up, we'll.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, um, Brian Enzler should be joining us here shortly. He was just hopping on, um, when I took that phone call. So, um, you all should have received a copy of some talking points for the joint legislative meeting and what it outlines is a general, uh, draft. And let me let Brian in. Hold on just a second. Um, so just starts with a a general welcome and thanking the legislators for, uh, all of the accomplishments and leadership in 2021. And we've provided, you know, four bullet points of some of the major, um, you know, policy and then, um, funding set aside that, uh, impacted the city of Lacey. And then from that point, just transitioning to a very general, you know, here's our introduction, uh, to 2022 priorities. So this would just be a real quick, you know, here's our top five. And then the idea would be that after that point, um, we do a deeper dive into each specific priority. And if, uh, there were council members who wanted to talk to each of those, that would be, um, I think, a really good point to have the legislators hear of the city councils, uh, priorities for 2022 coming from the city council. So the first one that would be, uh, kicking us off would be the, uh, continue to focus on the I-5 corridor between Mounds Road and Tumwater, including the Nisqually River Delta. And so you find that on page two of the talking points. And so, um, just looking for a council member that would be interested in, uh, talking about this item and presenting it to our our legislators. And then it would just.
I would be, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, go through the rest of them like that too, but we can take them one by one. So Councilmember Kunkel, if you had a comment or a question or statement.
Yeah, I I would like to, uh, work with our chief on item number three, uh, public safety concerns. Uh, but I am here to be part of the team, so whichever works best is fine.
That's, that's fine. I think, I think between you and you and the chief should, you know, talk about that since the chief has firsthand experience and can speak straight to it.
I I would gladly take the I-5 corridor unless you think you wanna do that, Andy, but you and I have been playing tag on this for how many years?
Yeah, so that's fine. You can, you can take that over to the mayor.
I'm not thinking. I'll do whatever you want.
You wanna talk to the, um, affordable housing?
Sure, I can do that.
And then item number four, address, uh, the homeless crisis.
You know, maybe, um, since we're down a couple people, maybe if you could also do that, Ed, and and have the chief kind of play, you know, talk about the the, uh, public safety concerns unless they, you know, have him maybe be more of a focus on that and you can, you can chime in.
Uh, sure, chief, do you wanna take the lead on either of these four or these two bullet points? Or do you want me to? And then you chime in. How, what would you prefer, chief? Because I I really wanna get the point across.
Right, no, I, yeah, I think this is, um, the opportunity for council to, uh, to kind of take lead on it, but then I think I'll bolster points and, uh.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, frankly, I think it's a, it's a good opportunity for you guys to kind of get face time with legislators and, uh, express the importance of this initiative.
Right, right. I'm glad, I'm glad you're here. Uh, and I hope that we bring that emphasis to bear effectively.
Yeah, we've had really good conversations up to this point, so, and they've been actually soliciting inputs, so I'm pretty, uh, pretty pleased where we've gotten to so far, so I'm also interested about today as well, so.
Okay, so yeah, uh, mayor, I'll take three and four then.
Okay, just, uh, Councilmember Kunkel, I think the thing on number four to remind, uh, we're actually taking an opportunity to thank Representative Barkus. He's the one who secured $3 million in trying to assist with local governments' cleanup efforts as well as sheltering efforts. And so he was a huge champion of that, so we're benefiting from his leadership in that area.
I know that the, the only thing I have to say about the number two and and number four is I always like to give an example, right, of that, it's like, you know, working collaborative to create more affordable housing solutions, what what does that mean? Right, I mean, if if you can't, if we can't give an example, I don't know how we're expecting them to.
But that's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point, Mayor, and I I don't know quite. Uh, yeah, we could go on all day about this.
So two, two examples come to mind about the collaborative housing projects. One is, um, council's shown leadership with Habitat Humanity in removing building permit fees and transportation impact fees to help those projects. The most recent one that comes to mind is your work with Homes First and trying to establish a home with four adult teens.
Well, okay, so are we just asking for money then? Is that what we're doing?
So Mayor Ryder, the the request is is more for, hey, you know, cities have a lot of information, they have a lot of experiences, they have, you know, um, their own rules, regulations, policies and programmings. So what the the request really is, is that, you know, we have a voice in being able to provide those experiences to make sure that it is the best outcomes um, for individuals who live within the jurisdictions to provide affordable housing, just given the experiences, um, that we have within the communities in in which we represent.
I I agree with that statement. I'm still not sure what the.
It doesn't clarify. It doesn't clarify. I didn't get what you're saying, Mayor.
Right, like, I I I agree with that, and I I agree with those are two two good examples. What what, I'm not, still not sure what the ask is.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
I, of course, I think perhaps specifically on the policy side, um, for instance, the the notion of allowing us to understand locally what's the best alternatives is is maybe most poignant for Representative Bateman, who is considering preempting local zoning and requiring quadplexes wherever there's residential. So that, that's just, just wanna flag that, and I wanted to get to that first. To directly answer your question somewhere, I like, for instance, as, as Mr. Spence mentioned, uh, Representative Barkus was very instrumental in, um, helping us get a one-time $3 million appropriation statewide for DOT rights away. There is a ongoing need for funding and also a commitment from the state, from a leadership perspective, to say, this is our responsibility. There is cost associated with having this responsibility, but but DOT rights away are our responsibility and there is a homeless problem there. And I think that's what's happening there. Um, perhaps lastly, there are some efforts in the 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 Medicaid world, and this is maybe, and there's a little bit of a distinction we're making between items two and three that maybe is false or not. But we know we have a behavioral health crisis. So it's to continue to improve access to community resources and services around, um, serious mental illness and um, and, um, uh, addiction problems, yes, so behavioral health. And so how do we, how does that, how are there actually resources in our community to help these people, whether it's, uh, on the service side or actually on the, on the housing side, because they really go together. So I, does that help?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I always like to try to be as a straight shooter as possible when it comes to these meetings, right? Being, we, we know these legislators personally. Um, it's not like we're asking strangers on any of this stuff, and so I I just like to be as direct as possible when, what what the ask is and be clear about it.
So Brian, on that, on that question, I want to be clear too, if we're, if our message is please don't preempt local zoning authority and local city councils, isn't that really the genesis of number two? I mean, we can, so right now, this, yeah, this work session, we're looking at consolidating our zero to four to three to six. So I guess the the message would allow us to do the good work that's tailored to our community. I mean, be mindful that we're doing good things to address those issues that the legislature obviously is concerned about. Is that the message we want to be specific?
I think so. And 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 Mayor Ryder, I do appreciate, um, what you're saying. And I, I, you you know, they have significant amounts of resources available. The general fund forecast continues to go through the roof, there's, we, one of the things that we have, we are aware of is that, um, led by former Speaker Chop, there is, um, a proposal being floated to make housing a Medicaid entitlement. So, so if you were, you know, um, you know, like, um, on the Medicaid plan in Apple Health and you had a serious mental illness, you could qualify for housing as a benefit. I don't, I I don't know how far that's gonna go. But, but, but a key component of that is that that they, they have resources to bear to help create more housing now. They have, they have, um, state and federal.
So that's for number, that's for number four.
But here's my question, why couldn't we, that collaborative thing is also working with agencies on right-of-way, uh, issues to make sure that we don't have to bear the brunt of the right-of-way, but state agencies need to collaborate with us to to, um, help the problem. Isn't that part of it too, or not?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's the other thing, you know, uh, collaborative, uh, and partnerships are another mandate unfunded for us to just deal with our limited budget money, you know, it's, they they needed me to halfway. Well, I I know, so well, I mean, we, we talk, we talk a lot about, you know, things that we've done and all, I just like to get down to the nitty-gritty and say, you know, let's, you know, cities are are best equipped to to deal with this, so please don't preempt us on, you know, because that would cause a lot of problems and I think we just need cuts to chase here. Because the, the open end request says that we work collaborative, local, just create a variety of, I mean, that that doesn't tell me anything. So I just want the request to be a little more pointed. Right?
I I understand. I guess what I would, I would share my perspective is that, uh, I don't see Representative Bateman going anywhere for a long time if if if, other than perhaps a direction up. And, um, she has publicly announced that she's gonna sponsor legislation that would preempt us. Um, I don't necessarily think it's, um, I think we, I think it's totally fair to, um, let her know our, our, our concerns with that, which we have. But I also think that she's gonna have a lot of headwinds with that proposal.
Okay.
And I am, I I would suggest long term, from a relationship standpoint and strategy standpoint, I think it is im- important to be open, clear and direct with her that we have some concerns. But I also don't know that we need to be aggressively hostile against it.
And that's not my request. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, uh, you know, I I'd rather just be sort of clear of what we're asking and, you know, and and let that develop into a conversation.
I just wanted to make sure you had all of the, um.
I I know where she's coming from and I know, I know, I know the politics of this too. I'm just, we gotta use this time wisely and and for for me, I'd rather just be the clear shooter on where, you know, what we're, what we're talking about.
Okay, so we have concerns about being preempted specifically around requiring certain types of zoning or being preempted around zoning?
Well, in general, those are just two examples.
Yeah, you're joining us.
Sorry.
Hi, everybody.
Yeah, how's it going? We're just, we're still working, trying to be collaborative here and see who who's gonna talk about what, so.
All right, I'll go on you. Go ahead.
You know how this goes.
I think we're, I, well, it is time.
Hmm. We still have, uh, number five outstanding. If there was anybody on the council that would like to take up, uh, the two, uh, items listed in number five.
And then, uh.
Carolyn hasn't been assigned anything either.
No, Carolyn, you're doing, you're doing the two.
Number two.
Yeah.
And then Mike, can you do number five?
Yeah.
And you can do the last one, Mike?
Yeah, yep.
Things Jessica likes me the best. I think I'll be the most effective.
There you go. It's a strategy behind that.
Who's going, Jessica?
They're going good. First day of dropping bills today. One down, six to go. So feeling good.
I can't believe we're already here talking about the next legislative session. Seems like this went by quick.
Yeah, I hear you, and it'll go by really quick because it's a short session, so.
Does that mean your carryover bills from last year don't count against your, um, uh, House Speaker imposed limit of bill? That's great. Good. Good, because I, we, we know you have at least one bill that will be, um, uh, on the floor to begin the session or in in rules.
Oh, 1157?
Yes.
Yep. Yep, hoping that one makes it time. I'm sure you guys would be happy with that, too.
Which ones, which ones 1157?
That one gives our real estate excise tax rebate back to cities that, uh, allow dense construction of homes. So you can get some money back.
Be very welcome.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I wanna see the shared blueprints. I haven't seen them yet with the ADUs that Warner and Lacy are all using.
Yeah. Long time no see, JT.
Been a while, except for Andy. But he shocked me with that beard.
I know, really, like, who's this guy? Who's this old guy? Hey, what's in the decanter in the back?
I'm sorry?
What's in the decanter in the back? It looks like a night whiskey.
Well, you, you like to, if you're gonna be confined to the farm for pestilence, you like to have all your favorite things around.
Yeah.
Welcome, Representative Barkus.
Hello, glad to see everybody from my favorite city of Lacey.
See you.
Who else are we waiting for?
Representative Dolan.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, is, has, is Senator Hunt confirmed for this as well? And that was my understanding of the confirmations, but I I could be wrong.
Is he back from his travels?
I don't know.
Not that he couldn't call in from the road, but.
So Andrew, are you up in Bellevue for a conference as well? I just missed you, just missed you by the day.
It was funny. I was, uh, yeah, we, we actually, I commented because I think you stayed at the Western too.
Yeah, yeah, I was right there.
And, uh, I was at a meeting that evening and somebody says, gosh, I saw somebody, I thought it was, I thought it was you. You looked the same. And then they said it was the mayor of Lacey. I said, oh, my friend, yeah, well, he's got more of the fool thing going on, I'm just, I'm a little bit longer, so. Yeah, it was kind of funny, but yeah, you guys were up there for the retail thing, so.
Yeah, Washington Retail Association.
Yeah.
Now, Dolan, nice to see you.
Hi, all of you.
Thank you.
Hey, Lori, do you know Sam's gonna make it?
I don't know. I haven't talked to Sam, that I can call him.
Yeah, I texted him real quick, but.
We know Senator Hunt did confirm, but there may be some delay for some reason. We don't know about.
Well, I'm, I miss our in-house things where we have little, uh, the stuff from, what it was at, uh, MISO place and.
Where we can actually see each other.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty sure that was not canceled because of COVID, but canceled because I kept spilling coffee and 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 City Manager Spence was, uh, extremely displeased with the amount of money we were spending in carpet cleaning.
Mayor, I think it's up to you if you wanna begin, just given their time.
Sure.
So Sam is joining us, but right now his computer decided to upload new things, so he's watching the wheel go around, and as soon as it lets him, he'll join.
Good.
Sounds good. Well, let, let's go ahead and get started. First of all, it's, it's great to see all of you, and I know you guys are are gearing up for this next legislative session. But, uh, we wanna thank you for everything you you've done for the city of Lacey, um, you know, specifically last year. Um, with this gearing of $5 million for the preliminary design, environment, environmental review for the wash button, uh, for the I-5 corridor between Mounds Road and Tumwater. We'll talk a little bit more about the continued need on that corridor, which I'm sure we're all aware of. Um, and we also, you know, also geared that $607,000 Heritage Capital project grant funds for the new Lacey Museum and Cultural Center, which is, we're really looking forward to getting, um, that as well. Um, you also geared $3 million to help, uh, local, uh, entities address the public health and safety risks associated with the homes encampments on the wash button. Other state-owned railways, and we know, uh, uh, Andrew, uh, you're instrumental in that, and we thank you so much. And that's immediately paid off, um, and it's like, it's a huge need. You know, it's something that we've been dealing with in Lacey, and we've actually made a tremendous amount of progress, which we're very happy about. Um, and now thankful that we've been able to clean up some of those sites as well, because they were really becoming a, a public health crisis there too. And then, of course, the, um, the authorizing of the, um, tip, the, uh, tax increment financing for public infrastructure. Um, so we're looking forward to seeing those opportunities exist there in in Lacey. And so we're gonna go over, um, five different priorities for for Lacey, uh, today. Of course, we wanna continue to focus on the I-5 corridor. Uh, yeah, thanks for sharing that, uh, between Mounds Road and Tumwater, um, including the the Squali River Delta. As it says, we, you know, provide 106 million for the preliminary design and engineering and and railway acquisition as part of the next transportation package. We're hoping that will, uh, meet up with the new, um, uh, transportation package we are seeing from the federal government. Um, we also want, want to continue to work collaboratively to create, uh, affordable housing solutions that work for for all. And number three is the public safety concerns that we're gonna talk a little bit more about, gain some clarification. I know we, we've met, you know, and discussed some of that already, um, with the chair there, and so we're loo- looking forward to getting that a conversation. Um, of course, we continue to request state leadership and providing strategies and tools to address our growing unsheltered populations. And, um, but last, we have a couple budget requests for, for electric vehicle infrastructure. And then we're looking to, uh, um, having one of these Oxford Housing Program pilots with a nonprofit partner, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. So let's, uh, turn this over to, I think, the deputy mayor, who can talk a little bit more about that.
I am. And so I know we keep sounding like a broken record on this and, but this is obviously a multi-year request and, uh, we're really committed to some long-term solution along our I-5 corridor. As you know, it's such a big, uh, issue towards commerce, transportation, JBLM, um, soldiers moving back and forth to the base from Lacey, as well as, uh, just the environmental impacts that need to be addressed. Um, and I want to thank, um, Representative Barkus for being our, uh, hero for following through and and doing his best to get this the, um, you know, a lot of our design work through, um. You notice that there was an article, uh, in the Olympian that really did a major dive on the issue, so I'm not going into too much of that. Um, back in 2018, I actually wrote an op-ed for the Tacoma News Tribune. So obviously, you know, we've been lobbying for this for a long time. Um, again, I wanna applaud, uh, the legislature for the $5 million for our preliminary design and environmental review for this segment, segment. But obviously, there's way more important, not way more important, but more work to be done. And so our request is for 106 million for preliminary design and engineering and right-of-way acquisition. And the, um, preliminary, um, engineering would include design and energy, engineering for the full project, including replacing the bridges at the Nisqually River. And this is the most pragmatic, uh, strategy, obviously, uh, because that's where the, um, where the water and flooding will occur if we don't do something about it. Um, would it help address the threat of an I-5 closure due to flooding and help resolve environmental concerns? But, um, we want to remove the infrastructure and earth and fill that creates ne- negative impacts on salmon recovery and habitat and increase the risk of flood, which increases the risk of flooding in this corridor. And then add additional lanes in both directions on I-5 between mileposts 111 and 116. Um, I don't know if, um, we, whether this will be part of it, but we need to assess the impacts of mitigating, uh, the two train trestles that span I-5 as well. And we'll continue to work with our federal delegation on this. And we'll continue to work with our federal delegation on this issue. So I, you know, I could go on and on, which we've already done multiple years on, but I again, we're really pushing this as well, I believe, as the Association of Washington, no, the Thurston Regional Planning Council is pushing this as well.
Along with the Southside Military Communities Partners and, you know, Lacey's been leading on this issue from really from day one. And so we're just continuing to do that work and you all understand how important this is. And we we really know that what we're trying to do is set ourselves up for the federal transportation package, which we've been working closely with the National League of Cities to, you know, find more ways where we can leverage our our local dollars, state dollars to make this a big priority. So that's that's our continued work and we appreciate everything you've done on on this. Does either legislators want to chime in here real quick and let us know where you guys think?
No, go ahead. Go ahead, Andrew.
I just want to say, good to see you, Sam.
Yeah. Sorry, Rep Dolan, they got us, you know, with the thing on the screen, I can only see like three people. So always a challenge, but this is kind of my my purview. So I'm happy to continue this work. I know that we are, the conversations are ongoing, Southside Military Partnership, the Military Thurston Chamber, City of Lacey, Niskali Tribe, I just signed an MOU the other day or a couple of weeks ago. All active partners. So this is a great collaborative effort. I am aware of the of the ass kind of moving forward. Going to be challenging, but I have good news. I have been working for the last six months on a plan, funding plan. I just actually dropped the bills this morning on what's called the Real Act and it's about reappropriate reappropriate reappropriating money within the budgets between the general fund and the operating, which is the operating budget and transportation budget. So it's a a new bold way of looking at addressing some of our revenue shortfalls in the transportation budget. We have a considerable amount of money to work with. So there's more information on that. Also, we're still doing a deep dive into the federal infrastructure package. We don't know how that is actually going to come into play yet. It's going to take a while for the feds to get their act together as far as how those dollars will be made available. So we are way ahead of the curve on this one because of the work that's been done over the last several years. So if in fact those federal dollars do become available, that bodes well for a project of this significance here in the state. So we'll continue to be working on that.
So if I could just, if I could just add, first of all, huge thank you to Rep Barkus for all the work he puts into this. We're so lucky to have him and his expertise representing all of us. This summer, all the legislators in the 22nd, and I'm guessing several from the second went on a tour with the Niskalis of the river. And I was telling Willie Frank at the time, I think the Niskali Tribe should offer that to citizens that live in the geographic area, because I think if more people understood the dangers of both the bridge and how that river is rerouting itself, that we could get a lot more public support for this. I mean, obviously, we're all on it and have been for years. The tribe's on it. JBLM is on it. So we have a whole lot of voices singing the same chorus. But I just think if we could do more outreach to citizens, I think they'd be on it too. And with a project of this size, that would always help.
It's good to know.
Yeah, I agree. And you're right. Everyone knows there's an issue there, but they don't know all the issues that are there, right? And including the importance of the bridges and reengineering those to allow for better salmon access. And of course, if we don't do anything, it's going to be a complete disaster. So it's it's funny, we always seem we have to wait for something to completely break before we fix it, which is drives me crazy. But hopefully, we're leased out ahead on this one. So and, you know, I think we know you guys are on it as well. So thank you for your continued support. So the next one is to work collaboratively to create affordable housing solutions. I think Carolyn, you can take this.
Sure. Well, I think it's not lost on any of us that housing that people can afford is top of the list priorities. And I'm sure you all also are very painfully aware that one in three households in Thurston County is cost burdened by housing, meaning they pay over 30% of their income for that. Lacey's been hard at work on a variety of strategies trying to improve the housing situation here. Notably, we've been working with Habitat for Humanity, trying to get out of their way by waiving permit fees to keep those expenses as low as they possibly can be. We've been working for years now with Homes First. We're trying very hard to get a home for young adults, young teens that would be supervised. And of course, we've been using the Commerce Grant money to develop housing strategies. Olympia, Lacey, Tom Water, together worked on those and Lacey just adopted this in September. So this is all pretty fresh and new. One, one other thing that we're trying to do is work on housing density, because I think that will allow for more housing to be built. Lacey's on track to change our low residential density minimum of zero to four per acre to three to six residential units per acre. Which which leads us to Representative Bateman's bill. And Jess, I, you know, I really appreciate what you're trying to do with that. I think there are, however, some concerns among the the council and some of the other cities about having kind of a blanket minimum of lots per acre. So I think what we're asking for is a city voice in determining local zoning with that. Another thing I'd like to call to your attention is our residential ADU program. I think you probably are familiar with it and how COVID really slowed things down, but it is starting to pick up again. And we are sharing our our architectural drawings for those with Olympia and we've, we're making them available to the county and Tom Water as well. And from what we're hearing, this is actually a model that could go out into the wider world. There's been a lot of excitement created by that. And it's sort of a gentle way of building more density into neighborhoods and perhaps generating some income for the people whose yards can absorb them. So I guess I'd just like to take questions at this point. There there are several.
I just wanted to talk a little bit more about the ADU program with this, the city of Lacey, we just received our 2021 Governor Smart Communities Award for that program. And and this was, you know, and I just went out and did an interview and actually went out to and saw ADU that was recently built in our community. And she's actually going to be renting it out to a disabled older woman who is looking to downsize and it turns out to be a perfect match, right? They she renters has a place to stay at an affordable price. And then the owner has a little rental income coming in. So which is exactly what we were hoping was going to happen when we when we did this program. And we have adopted, there's three other architectural designs that the other cities have looked at. Now we're all combining. And so this is, this is something we're going to hopefully see you know, go across the state. You know, what it always comes down to is an understandable. You know, what we do in Lacey might be a little different than what happens in another community. And and so we just always want to make sure that the community is also on board with, you know, something, something like this. And that's, that's where we just hope to keep this dialogue open with. You know, whenever there's a mandate that comes out, you know, we all react differently to it. And so I know you're all aware of that as well. Yeah, Jessica, do you want to?
Sure. I'll just give you a quick plug. Thank you for your input and I applaud all the work that you're doing to create more housing in your community. I will be sponsoring a piece of governor request legislation with Senator Dawson, the Senate, that will legalize middle or low-impact housing across the state. So duplexes, quadplexes, triplexes in any area that is zoned for residential, single family. I think that the cumulative impact of us not building enough housing to keep it up with population growth has created a shortage of 225,000 homes. What happens in Lacey and Tom Water and Olympia impacts its neighboring communities. And we've seen that especially so in our larger counties like Pearson King, where we're seeing people moving to other areas that are more economical. However, what that does to communities like ours is increase home prices. The average median home price in Thurston County is now $450,000. And in fact, first-time homes for young people are only affordable in seven counties in Washington State, and they're all on the east side of the mountains. So we really have to take a statewide approach. What I would say is this ultimately gives the property owner the ability to respond to market demand for housing. Smaller, lower impact, it's aligned with our greenhouse gas reduction goals, our goals of allowing our elderly family members to age in place, also taking multimodal transportation, health, well-being, it connects to so many things. There still will be choice. There will still be things like design review. I am committed to working with you and talking through this legislation. And I do know from my experience on city council, land use can be tricky to deal with at the local level. And we do have to take a statewide approach. So I'm committed to working with you. And I've already reached out to the AWC about it and I'll be more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, you can see your hand up.
I think Rep Wilcox has hand up first. It's just.
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't see all the all the screens either. Go for it.
I defer to Rep Wilcox and then I'll come back.
There you go. Okay, that'd be better. Yeah, thank, thank you. That's better to not share the screen. So I can, when we're doing this part, go for it.
Well, I wonder if any of you have been exposed to Governor Greg Ward's presentation?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that that I probably was not the first to see that. Really, really good. And the idea that she has about segmenting the unhoused population to the people that need the most help and then understanding those demographics really appealed to me. Especially the fact that Native Americans are so highly overrepresented in that area. And I've already reached out to Pagan Frank. If you don't know Pagan, she's married to Willie Frank and is also a lobbyist and and very has a very fertile mind for ideas. And I wonder if if your observation in Lacey corresponds to that, do you feel like there's a grossly disproportionate number of of Native Americans there? And should we be thinking about creating partnerships with, you know, at the very least, the Niskalis, because they're our neighbor, but maybe other tribes as well?
Well, I think anytime we can partner with the tribe to address our mutual interests is an opportunity we should take advantage of. And so, yeah, yes, I would, I would like to talk about this a little bit more and maybe speak to her, speak to her and see, you know, what she's seeing and what she's thinking. And we, of course, want to be collaborative in this. And, you know, the Skalys are a great partner with the city of Lacey and we want to continue to partner with them. You know, we've actually even talked about doing some housing out at their their property next to Cabela's as maybe a first stage of that project. And so I think now is a good opportunity to maybe, you know, see if we can start those conversations and see if we can come up with some low-income housing out there. That would be great and aligned with city's goals as well.
Well, a few years ago, Andrew and I sponsored a housing project on the Niskali Reservation. And I think we were told that that was the first time state dollars had been used to build reservation housing. And the many things that really attracted me to it, and this is why I'm suggesting it's a slightly different approach, is they they specifically mentioned that one of their reasons for building that housing was to go out and find members who had lost touch with their tribe and bring them back to their family and community. And I just, I just said, I can imagine no better solution. And if we can help partner with that, doesn't mean that that Lacey has to build the housing. It means that families get reunited in ways that are just so productive. And again, I would strongly urge you to do that. And Pagan or Willie or Andrew, you have the people that you normally talk to.
So Scott, I know we have a meeting coming up with the tribe. Let's, let's add this to as a conversation point. Okay, thanks, JT. That's a good suggestion. Now, Andrew.
Trying to turn my hand off. My yellow hand up. Thank you. I'm glad JT, I know it's kind of drops down to one of your other points about the unsheltered and homelessness. And I already have had conversations along with Rep Wilcox with Willie and the tribal council regarding substance use disorder, the effect of homeless, not only on the tribe, but the community. They are working in partnership with Thurston County, as you know, on medically assisted treatment. They're taking some pretty bold steps. So that's a conversation's worth the continuation on. And as we have talked about, some bold steps to deal with the homeless or the drug addiction, mental health, unsheltered that we have in our communities here. Back to the other type of housing, I want to first thank the city of Lacey for being a leader when it comes to ADUs. You guys know I've been trying to pass an ADU bill for, I don't know, three, four sessions now. And glad to hear the story that you actually had one that they were able to rent to an elderly family member. That's been one of the hangups in trying to get statewide legislation passed. They did pass a bill last year. I actually voted against it. It was just in my opinion, didn't really do anything to help the problem. But I'm glad to see that the city is doing that. We will continue to work on that. I applaud, give a little shout out to Representative Bateman. Representative Bateman reached across the aisle, which is what we like to do. And she and I had lunch because she has a passion for housing and she knows that I've been the lead on housing in the legislature for the last several years. I'm hoping with her help, we can get some of these policies passed the house. We've been putting forth, I have for years, solutions to deal with many of the issues she speaks of and many of the issues that the city has brought forth to no avail, very limited ability to get things through for a myriad of reasons. So I think that is good. I've offered assistance to help on that bill. I just got a copy of it. So I've got to start reviewing and doing my due diligence. And there are other pieces of legislation that we're going to be working with, working with together collaboratively. Some will challenge a little bit. Hopefully, the cities will will come on board because I do believe that we need some statewide policy when it comes to housing. And so we're going to have to find some compromise between cities and counties and all of us to to reach that because the time is now. We have spent too many years discussing and trying to pass little things and do stuff while the problem gets worse every single day. So I'm hoping that this will be a good start to some meaningful impactful policy coming up.
Yeah, you know, what what really comes down to, and I think Jessica, you pointed out this is the design review side of things for sure, right? I mean, every community is a little bit different. I've been saying for this long time, as long as you're not completely changing the characteristic of a neighborhood, right? You don't there's, you're even in a neighborhood of full of ramblers, you know, it's more smaller ramblers there, but you go into a two two stories or stuff like that, it starts, that's when the public comes out and.
Absolutely. And we're not talking about apartments in any case. This is still smaller scale. So I agree with you.
Yeah, so we appreciate that. Does anyone else have anything to add? Okay, then that's, let's go on to our, the next request. Which is, I think it's the public safety concerns. I know that you guys are quite aware of this. I'll turn this over to Ed.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everybody being here today. So topic is public safety concerns, return of less lethal options, use of force and commission clarification. So our city has a phenomenal police department and is committed to providing transparent and accountable public safety. While the city recognized the need for statewide reform, several policy changes made during the 2021 legislative session resulted in unintended ancillary consequences that put the general public and public safety officers in additional and unnecessary danger. So we are requesting that the legislature provides some clear definition for the following undefined terms used in the legislation. Physical force, use of force, exhaust, available, appropriate, et cetera. appropriate, et cetera. And Chief is listening in, if you want to chime in at any time while I'm talking about this, please don't hesitate, because you are the boots on the ground on this issue. So to clarify the definition of prohibited military equipment that would expressly allow for possession and deployment of less lethal tools by law enforcement, to include less lethal munitions and platforms regardless of caliber or propellant used. To clarify and expand circumstances when use of force is authorized to include non-arrest circumstances, such as involuntary treatment acts, court orders, court-authorized custody and seizure orders to assist fire, paramedic healthcare workers with restraint of non-compliance patients, et cetera. Permit law enforcement to use reasonable proportional force when necessary yet appropriate to overcome resistance to detain persons affected of serious felony crimes, to include but not limited to murder, attempted murder, felony assault, sex crime, felony domestic violence, crimes against children, robbery, residential burglary, arson, all kinds of subjects there. And to permit law enforcement to use reasonable and proportional force when necessary and appropriate to overcome resistance and restore orders stemming from unlawful activities related to unruly public demonstrations, unlawful assemblies and riots. To further, Mayor, were you trying to say something?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Provide further clarification on use of force and requirement to leave the scene in absence of a crime or an imminent threat of death or substantial bodily harm. Allow public safety personnel to determine use of tear gas at public riots, requiring the mayor or highest elected official to determine deployment of tear gas during a public riot creates an undue burden on the elected official. To provide clarification on limited commission officers such as city's community service officers and joint animal service, animal control officers. Current legislation places an unfunded and unreasonable burden upon the local government to bring partially, commission personnel into compliance with CJTC. And commission officers' standards that do not apply to their current job duties.
You wanted to add?
That was a mouthful, and I'd really like for the chief to chime in if I missed anything at all.
Well, no, thank you so much, Councilmember Kunkel. Hello again to Senator and Representatives, it's good to see you again. Really appreciate our meetings, met with some of you individually and also in our group meeting with Representative Goodman and Johnson on this very topic. And these are a lot of things that we've already discussed, right? Talking about clarification of some of the terms used in the new legislation, right sizing it so that things are done properly. As you said, the legislation was really targeted towards some of the outliers and some more egregious law enforcement examples, not Lacey, which I appreciate. However, we're still confined, constrained by some of the definitions and lack of definitions. So we really would like to get some more clarification on some of those issues. Really appreciate the work that we've done to come together on the less lethal tools, and it looks like we'll be getting those back, thank you so much for your work on that. Really talking about getting back to the reasonable suspicion standard for certain crimes, so that we have the ability to tame people while we build probable cause, so that very dangerous people aren't being let loose back into the population to affect our community is really a concern. So if we get some work on that, that would be greatly appreciated. The mayor, the near and dear to the mayor's heart is the use of tear gas in public demonstrations, and he doesn't want to be involved in that decision-making process, he prefers to have law enforcement make that decision. Obviously, it's not a very common thing in Lacey, frankly. So it's just, it's, it's an unusual burden placed upon our elected officials, so it is a matter of concern for us. And really, most importantly, is the limited commission, the application of commission standards to limited commission personnel, partially commission personnel. So here in Lacey, we have community service officers who perform, they book property, they book evidence, they direct traffic, really low-level type things that don't require a full commission. We'd like to expand their duties, but right now the law doesn't permit some of it, like we'd like them to take traffic reports, but you have to be a commissioned officer to take a traffic report, or the RCW. So, going back to really what I think our joint priority is, is to get, you know, non-gun, non-gun-carrying people to calls that don't require guns to be there or weapons to be there, trying to get, you know, the other folks into these type of investigations and law enforcement procedures, really be helpful. Also, frankly, our community service officers, we'd like to help, they take low-level reports for the suspects not present, such as a vehicle prowler, a low-level burglary, malicious mischief, those type of things. And if they have to do everything a police officer has to do, it doesn't make sense to have partially commissioned personnel. This also affects our animal services people, who only are involved in, in writing animal tickets, like dog-off leash, that kind of thing, or barking dog, and to think that they have to do all the things that a police officer has to do to be certified or to be commissioned is, is just an undue burden, and we're going to lose a lot of, a lot of good people because they can't meet the standards that would require a fully commissioned officer. So I would ask that there be some, some work in that area as well. But again, I really appreciate the collaborative nature of our discussions, I appreciate, especially Representative Bateman coming out and taking a ride along with us, I think that was really mutually beneficial, for us to see both sides of the coin, and, you know, invite all of you to come to partake, like I do is wear a mask, other than that, willing to do it. So thank you so much for your time and for your kind of attention.
Does anyone, any legislators want to chime in on where we're at, on looking at some of these definitions? I know Jessica's been working on this.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chief, and I'll definitely get this slide from Brian to make sure that I have it. Some of those points that you mentioned have been discussed, like we did in that large group, the reasonable suspicion, the munitions, et cetera. I know those are actively being worked on right now and being drafted to make some updates to that legislation. Appreciate your coming to the table with us and providing that feedback from my ride-along I was able to see with my own eyes. Kudos, by the way, to your sergeant, he was really fantastic, and all of your officers were that I met, the need and the necessity for these changes. So, for the differences and the updated changes that I didn't hear about, the non-commissioned officers, I want to make sure that I can get that in writing, so I can talk with both Annalise and get some legal language, and then provide it to the chair and the vice-chair. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Yeah, just following up on that, I think we're going to be lucky in the Senate, too bad for the House, but we're going to get John Lovett coming to the Senate, and as a retired sheriff and former police chief, he's been one of the three people most involved in that, and I think, you know, he will add a real voice to that. And like any legislation, you never pass a perfect bill, so, you know, you always assume that, especially in the rush that we were in, that we try to address as much as possible, we know we have to come back and fix it, and there will be some real effort on doing that this session. And thanks to our local law enforcement officers and our, our community leaders and city councils and county commissioners, who have been in the forefront and helping us address this.
Appreciate it. Okay, Karen?
I just would like to share kind of an interesting statistic that may help you all, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is that in 2020, Lacey Police had more than 40,000 encounters, and of those, there was not a single bullet fired, and there were no serious injuries among any of the people detained or arrested.
We never even pulled our firearm in 2020.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
And that was before this legislation, you know, took effect, and so, I think Lacey is a perfect example of why the tweaking that we're talking about here is so important, because losing those tools makes it more difficult to have that kind of a record.
And, Andrew?
You're on mute. Finally, I can say that.
You got to, you got me, I got to do that this morning, one of my other meetings I had. I just was going to say, thank you, Mayor, and Ed Roberts, pleasure meeting with you and thank you for the great work that you're doing, Lacey is truly an example. I'm glad to hear from my colleagues on the other side of the aisle that this, we are going to be looking at this, we too will be proposing, like we did during the process when this legislation was being adopted and considered, myriad of changes and, and to address a lot of the concerns that we're hearing from our constituents and cities throughout the state. Rep. Mossbrucker, I think, will be our lead on that, Rep. Wilcox, probably, will chime in on that. But I'm glad to hear, because it's not just, if you've noticed recently, the mayor of Federal Way and many other mayors up north are taking this to another level because of the, unlike Lacey, but I know Lacey has also seen increases in crime, dramatic increases in, in myriad of crime, and I'm glad to hear that weapons haven't been pulled, but I'm also concerned about the ever-increasing crime, not only in Lacey but the surrounding communities, and some of this legislation has impacted their ability to deal with that. So it will be a challenging session moving forward to address these, and I'm hoping that we will have some solutions brought forth to do that.
Yeah, it's interesting that you mention that. So, catalytic converters, it's a regional, region-wide issue, but you find a way with catalytic converter, that's not probable cause to detain them, that's just a starting point, and it's tough, right? It really gets to a dramatic impacts on a particular crime. Also, grand theft auto is big, we're seeing a lot of stolen vehicles now, and frankly, they're cutting up, cutting them up for metal, and then reclaiming the metal. So it's, it's, it's a strange, you know, pattern for the crime right now. That's kind of the increase we're seeing, we're seeing catalytic converters, we're seeing some property crime rises, some grand theft auto rises, and it would really be helpful to be able to bring back the reasonable cost standard, or reasonable suspicion standards to really have an impact on those particular crimes.
Yeah, I know there's some specific legislation out there with the catalytic converters, I heard that recently as well, so I know, it's, you know, it seems like we're always playing catch-up, right? The, you know, what's the latest way for someone to, you know, get a quick dollar in the catalytic converter scene, as we all know, it's become a really big issue right now. Does anyone else have anything?
I think Brian has handed.
Oh.
Also, Mr. Wilcox.
Oh, well, Representative Wilcox.
Well, I just want to offer one piece of advice to all of you, you know what you need better than we do, don't, be, be very persistent. I think, I just got a ton of feedback last year that people were afraid to speak up on the public safety issues, especially people that are part of the police. Don't, don't let that happen this time, be very, very aggressive, engage up to the last minute, don't allow yourself to be ignored.
Anything else?
I just wanted to follow up with Representative Bateman, you requested that slide, I think we could very easily make sure that everyone on this call get a copy of that slide deck, we'll send that out perhaps even before this ends. Anecdotally, I did, I don't know if it's anecdotally, the, what's maybe interesting with the commission piece as well is, I don't know how many of you are aware of, but the Criminal Justice Training Commission is now seven months behind, so if we have a new individual and we want to hire a new officer, we can't bring them, you know, on the street in a meaningful way for now, seven months. They were funded at, I believe, 12 classes in the current budget, and there's a request to move that up to 19, so I wanted to make you aware of that, and if you think the interplay between having people that I would certainly argue are not a priority taking place over a priority is, I think is meaningful. And then, although perhaps not specifically germane to Lacey, and I, and I, I should know exactly the city of Olympia mayoral structure, but in some cities, the mayor is, is not the chief executive officer of a city, in many cities. And so, there's, you know, in one of our bullet points, there's a conversation about the tear gas piece, and I, I think there's a hearts and minds argument about whether it should be a mayor or a, or a law enforcement personnel, but there's actually just a practical argument about statewide where many mayors in many cities don't actually have any executive authority, so regardless of how you want to approach that, it's not currently drafted in a way that's practicable. So I wanted to highlight that for you, and I know we haven't had an opportunity to have that conversation, so I apologize for not providing that information or being even aware of that information until now, so.
Sounds good, anything else? So, our, our next bullet point is, again, talking about providing strategies and tools to address their growing unsheltered population. We've, we've already kind of talked a little bit about this as we kind of rolled it into the other issue. I guess there's some specific requests that we have bolded, do you want to talk about those, those specific requests, Mike, Seven?
I think that was me that was...
Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, I'm number five. Yeah, sorry.
No worries, worries. So, we're looking for leadership strategies and tools to address, of course, the unsheltered population in Washington City. Lacey has been collaborating to our best efforts with the Department of Transportation on encampments around their right-ofways. From October 2020 to July 21, city spent nearly $40,000 on a private contractor to clean up the, the areas that are affected, and we've removed over 90,000 pounds of garbage. In the summer of 2021, the city created the Mobile Outreach Team in partnership with Behavioral Health Resources, and established a Public Works Rapid Response Team to help efforts, in addition to the ongoing efforts of the Community Resource Unit. And CRU provides outreach services to Lacey's most vulnerable community members, including individuals experiencing homelessness, behavioral health issues, and the CRU consists of two police officers, programs goals to help unsheltered individuals get connected to services and get themselves into better predicament. So MOT works collaboratively with Lacey Police Department, Community Resource Unit, and Rapid Response Team. MOT consists of two crisis clinicians and two peer specialists, and MOT is on-call seven days a week to assess individuals at the request of a police officer. In addition to identifying the unique needs of individuals, the MOT strives to build trust and relationships to help connect individuals to available resources within the community. And the Rapid Response Team cleans up junk and debris in public spaces such as streets, sidewalks, and right-of-way in Lacey. The RRT consists of two public works maintenance, yeah, public works workers. Items commonly picked up by the RRT include abandoned shopping carts, homeless encampment materials, and other nuisances, and allows the Community Resource Officer and Mobile Outreach Team to focus more attention on law enforcement-related duty and helping those in the community experiencing homelessness connect to available resources. So the city is really appreciative of the curing of the $3 million to help with local entities, address public health and safety risks associated with homeless encampments. And a few more points, while these funds are vital to addressing an outcome of the ongoing homeless crisis, a comprehensive response remains necessary to effectively respond holistically to this complex issue. Our city is ill-equipped to address the causes and the consequences resulting, the behavioral health, the substance abuse, shelter, affordable housing, economic disparity are overwhelming most Washington cities, and we need to prioritize this with some legislative leadership. So the city is seeking leadership from the state of Washington to provide a unified set of strategies and tools to navigate this crisis and support our unsheltered. Without state leadership and direct participation in a meaningful way, we will not achieve what we need to achieve. And we are requested we provide ongoing funding of $5 million to help local entities, for example, mid-sized cities like Lacey and the Thurston County region, and to address public health and safety risks associated with homeless encampments on Department of Transportation and other state-owned right-of-way.
So, obviously, Andrew, you've been working on this issue, and we appreciate the one-time $3 million, is there an ongoing, what's, what's the next steps for, for you on this?
I think it was $5 million, maybe it's $3, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Um, so... Um, so, yeah, I I think I'm as frustrated as you on, I would say, the lack of leadership, but I will keep it nonpolitical. We 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 definitely need to get more collaborative on this. You know, I applaud the city for taking the steps. As a matter of fact, it was the city of Lacey who reached out, council member Greenstein is not here and others. And I know Mayor Ryder, we talked, who reached out and said, hey, we need some help. We we've got to deal with this right away issue. We've been trying to do it. We'd set up a pilot program in Tacoma and Seattle. And so I asked for a lot more. We we got what we could get out of the budget. Last year was a tough budget time. I actually just found out, I was very disappointed to find out, Senator Hunt, my Senate colleagues. The House, we did pass a provisor that I added to the operating budget for fifteen million dollars additional funds over a biennium to deal with homeless encampments throughout the state, not just on right of ways. I thought that that was adopted. It never made it through the Senate final budget conference. So I'll be back to work on that. Maybe my Senate counterparts can help me make sure that that's a priority, especially in lieu of the amount of money that the state now has to deal with in this problem. In my opinion, we should be taking a COVID-esque approach on all levels of government to dealing with the homeless crisis. And when it comes to substance use and mental health, which is what we're seeing on our streets today, we need to be doing that. So I will continue to work. I know Rep Bateman has also a passion in this line and has done great work along those lines, as well as my other colleagues on this call today. Is I don't think there's any disagreement in any of us that this is a problem. I think it's going to take some political will to to deal with the crisis and help the people where they stand. And I think that's been the challenge. You know, removing the option to stay has been my number one priority. We have to remove the option that says if we're going to provide all these services and we have the resources and dollars, the option should not be, well, if the person says, no, we don't want it, we just want to stay in our tent underneath the bridge, that can no longer be an option. I'm also very concerned. I'm glad to see that you're, the city, a little bit to the south of you is taking some actions on a longstanding encampment. But I'm also concerned that a lot of those people are going to end up in Lacey. So I don't know exactly what their plan is. I'm sure you're aware of it. As is your law enforcement and other service providers. But it is, it's much more than just a money issue, although that is important. It has to do with housing. It has to do with permanent supportive housing. It has to do with addiction recovery services on a grand scale that we need to start working on. So we'll, I'll continue to fight along those ways as well as all of us will.
Thank you, Andrew. Jessica?
Thank you. I agree with my colleague that we need some laser strategic focus on this issue. We have data that tells us there is an office, a financial management report from twenty eighteen that states of the assessment of behavioral needs and watch behavioral health needs in Washington state, we had a shortage of seventeen thousand permanent supportive housing beds. So that's clear. We are creating about one thousand units per year. So in seventeen years, we're going to be up to par. Unfortunately, it continues to increase in the meantime. So we know what we need to do. The problem is we have no plan in place to actually achieve that outcome. And you all are paying the cost of it. EMS, law enforcement, economic development every single day, not to mention the folks that are living unhoused with unmet behavioral health, needs assistance. Medicaid pays for behavioral health, mental illness, substance use disorder. We can get folks those services and those needs in a permanent supportive housing environment. We desperately need to create it. We cannot do it all on our own as government. That is a substantial cost. So we need a plan for how we're going to work with the private sector to get these units created. So we can get people off the street into housing, get them as healthy as they can be and focus on the other things that we need cities to focus on. There will be a bill, the Health and Homes Act of twenty twenty two, that's a Frank Chop bill that's going to hopefully establish a medical necessity need link to that permanent supportive housing. So we can set ourselves up for creating that housing in the future. I'm very excited and I'm willing to work on it. And I'm also happy to work across the aisle because I believe that the solution to addressing this issue is going to be multifaceted. There's no one single solution. We're going to need everyone at the table to create a solution to address this.
Back to Andrew, or you still have your hand up?
No, I just wanted to add one more thing. I'm sorry, I just just got spurred some thoughts in my head. Going back to our other point too, and I know the chief of police would agree and as many others will. We also, as we're looking at these tweaks to some of the reforms that are passed, we have to remember that a lot of the times the policies that we create have unintended consequences. And so we do, there is an element of criminal aspect too, that is within these camps. A lot of the people, we want to make sure that that, you know, so many times we've removed our law enforcement being from being a lot of the first contact and helping get that pathway. And in working together with law enforcement and also our our service providers in mental health and substance use. It's a staggering number to think seventeen thousand units in in what we need to do. We're also looking at repurposing state facilities that have been changed from a criminal aspect into more of a social service aspect. But we can't just keep doing this while also creating more policies that allow for more people to fall into this problem, i.e. the drug use, the crime that goes with it, everything else that kind of spins. I know this firsthand, so speaking with a little experience in in the context of that. So these are policies are like Rep Bateman said, are so interconnected. There's no one piece of it. So that, when we look to the city, we're going to be looking to work and partner on a lot of these different things that that have to be addressed with this problem.
Well, the the city of Lacey is committed to doing everything we can to to get more supportive housing. We we know there there has to be, we, the numbers speak for themselves, right? And so this council is unanimously committed to bringing more supportive housing to our community. And we're actually working, you know, with Lacey, Olympia, Tomar, Thurston County on a collaborative effort through our our Regional Housing Council on strategies to do this. And it's, you're right, it's going to have to be a public private partnership that because the private sector is still going to be the one building this in the end. And so we have to figure out ways how we can maximize that. And we're, you know, looking at some hotels right now to purchase in this region. I think that'll be, you know, you know, it's already built. We need to do some remodeling on it, but we have some American Recovery Act dollars we can do. It's just, you know, it's the ongoing expense and we're looking at, you know, tools to to help with that as well. So but there's no doubt we need more units along in with this, with the wraparound services. Really happy with what, you know, Squali and their partnership. We need, you know, a lot of these individuals are going to be on medically assisted treatment for the rest of their lives. That's just, that's just the way it's going to be. And we just don't have enough facilities. And it's great to see that, you know, the Squali stepping up and and working with that nonprofit, you know, we'll we'll need more of that. And as he, as he's pointed out, Jessica, it's covered under Medicare and Medicaid, but man, you have to get them into some sort of housing for them to get qualified and be able to do all that. So we just are in a huge shortage. We all know this. And we just thank you for your leadership. I think we're all on the same page here. Just we have to continue to working together on on these issues. And I look forward to doing that with you guys.
Mayor, Mr. Spence, I would like to do a quick time check with our esteemed guests. We are very near the end of our scheduled time. We have two capital budget request items that we're very excited to. And if you had five minutes or so, we would love to talk to you about them. If you don't, I can certainly follow up, but I'm seeing a thumbs up from Representative Bateman.
Five minutes. That's it. That's it, Brian. Got to go.
Great. Well, good. Now you get to.
Laurie, you got, you have to go, Laurie?
No, she gave a thumbs up.
Okay.
Good. So you get to enjoy the dulcet tones of.
So.
Mr. Stedman?
We still have a priority though. And I promise to be quick. Do you want me to go ahead, Andy, now?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Hey, I just wanted to welcome Jessica, Andrew, JT, Laurie and Sam. You're all friends of mine. I want to recognize the change of responsibility for one-two strike brigades with Command Sergeant Major Will Langus, who none of us can't be there because this is how important it is to us. All our priorities are are significant. And I want to touch base on capital budget requests, including a public electric electric vehicle infrastructure and the Oxford Housing Program with a nonprofit partner. So you guys know we're committed in City of Lacey in reducing our carbon footprint to combat harmful impacts of the climate change. Two thousand twenty one, the city adopted Thurston County climate mitigation plans, which serves as a policy framework to guide the city in achieving carbon reduction targets. One strategy of the plan is to increase adoption of electric vehicles and allow for free parking for all electric vehicles at local government buildings. The city approved two hundred and sixty thousand this year to accomplish Climate Action Plan initiatives. In addition, the city is good, put efforts towards combating climate change. It will be piloting a program to transition its vehicle fleet to all electric while seeking to leverage it to expedite and encourage the transition to electric vehicles in the greater community. And also to expect expedite and encourage the transition to electric vehicles in the greater community, the city is planning to develop, expand accessible electric infrastructure and strategic public spaces throughout the city, starting with locations closer proximity to the city parks, public facilities and I five corridor. So our request is simple. A hundred thousand dollars to add electric vehicle chargers, charging stations related to infrastructure at the city parks and and public facilities and close to the I five corridor. And that's a no brainer at a price of a hundred thousand dollars. I think it's not out of the, out of the reason. The other one is Oxford Housing Program. The city is actively engaging a number of initiatives and programs to help alleviate poverty and and increase and maintain affordable housing in the Lacey and greater Thurston area to prevent and reduce homelessness in the community. The Oxford House models a community based approach to addiction recovery, which provides housing and rehabilitative support to adults who are recovering from addiction and want to remain absent from use. The city is looking to purchase a house in Lacey for this purchase or for this purpose and provide funding to support housing and social service programs or other service programs of other local nonprofits and governmental entities in in recent, the city provided ninety five thousand for senior services, South Sound to reinstate the home share, cities fifty thousand to family support centers to South Sound to supplement shelter expansions. A hundred thousand to Interfaith Works to assist with construction operation of the Martin Way Shelter. Hundred fifty thousand of homes first to purchase an upgrade house to provide housing, support a company, unaccompanied female young adults obtaining their high school diploma. The request is also simple and a bargain. The city's committed two hundred fifty thousand and they're asked, we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars. So you can look at it as maybe a matching program from the state to make the program a reality by providing funding and and purchasing the and or rehabilitate rehabilitation, the house for this program. That's our ask and appreciated. I tried to do it as fast as I could. I respect you guys' time.
Do you think to add real quick to that, Brian?
No, I, we, you know, with respect to the Oxford House, we're looking at capital money, will help support from you to help purchase or and or rehabilitate a home. We can help provide the operating funds that can't be funded out to get it started up and have the wraparound services. And then we see that partnership working that way.
Just to clarify, that was a five hundred thousand dollar ask.
Yes. Yeah. It was a five hundred thousand dollar ask. We're in private.
We put in two hundred and fifty, so you can look at it like it's a match, a matching grant or, or, you know, a dollar for fifty fifty.
So how how's capital, how's the capital requests, budget requests looking for this short session?
It's going to be less ambitious than it was last year, that's for sure. So what I would say is just get those requests into me as soon as possible. And I will submit them on your behalf and we will see what happens. But I appreciate that they are focused on reducing our climate change emissions and also getting folks housed. It sounds like a good investment to me.
Great. Thank you. Anything else from anyone?
Yeah, that's the reason why I'm more at, or else I'd be more dressed up for you guys. Yes, show of respect.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the one-two striker brigade change command. Anyway, Karen?
I was going to say that, what Rep Bateman, that's what they said last year. They said capital budget was not going to be, and it was like a wreck. So I told all my committees and including you, hey, just temper down your requests this year. And then it was, of course, like crazy. So, yeah, just happy to support, you know, my work with Homes First. So that's a wonderful organization doing great things. Oxford Houses are amazing. So glad to see on on that on their request form. And I will be happy to help whoever sponsors that moving forward.
Well, you know, we know our audience, so we figured that Miles will make good requests that you guys are going to support. That, do you maybe have something?
I do. I just want to thank all of you for taking time out to listen to us. We really appreciate it and are pleased with your good work.
Get those requests into me too, and Megan and I will work on that. And Stedman, we thought you were dressed up.
Hey, I did stream it live. All right. Carolyn, do you have something?
Well, I just wanted to make sure Sam realized there looks like there's a large animal approaching and getting very close.
That would be a W S U cougar, of course.
Uh, Lori?
So I'm just looking at our Zoom boxes and realizing that Cynthia Pratt's not going to be in that Zoom box much longer. And just want to tell you how much you're going to be missed and how how much we appreciate all the hard work your whole life for this community. And I I personally am going to miss you, Cynthia.
Well, thank you, but it gives me a chance to be an activist now.
Now, as though she hasn't been for all these years.
She hasn't been her entire life, for sure. Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate all your time. And I'm.
My cougar won't chase your deer, Cynthia.
Have a good rest of your day. Thank you.